This is genocide.
Yeah.
This one is dead.
Good.
Yeah.
Oh, well, should could be Janet.
Second.
Favorite.
I. Go to do it first.
I move. At second.
Yeah.
Item four, election of officers for a election of president of the board for twenty twenty six.
So um the normal route of this in all times other than a couple years ago. Is it would go to clerk. That would be you. So if you become president. If you swing off. Now I'm indifferent on being clerk, but but that normally is how it's worked. I think you should be president. I do think that should happen.
My only question was just. President. Things had moved to the past, but.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm done with that. That's why I figured listening to how it was gonna roll out anyway.
Okay, and do you wanna be clerk or do you do you I mean?
Well then.
I'm indifferent on it. I can do it or you can do it.
Yeah, uh. Yeah, doesn't matter. I'd be clerk.
Alright, well, I guess we'll see present first.
I move that Aaron becomes president twenty twenty six.
Alright, second it.
All his favorite.
Hi, okay.
I move that Chris becomes board for twenty twenty seven.
And I'll second that.
Favorite.
Hi.
Hi. Done.
Okay.
Uh so what I mean, item five. Five, a secretary of uh governing board. So.
Initially, that's shit.
Yes, yeah.
And I would.
That should stay as. I'm most of. After B and C, I'm most of everything.
Oh yeah, that's true. What? Can we just take them all as a group? And from just who is doing what and then just prove it all at the same time.
That's fair, yeah. So it's five A secretary of the board showed by these. And so governing board representative is without me to count as school or association.
I'd like to continue doing that because I actually have didn't this last year. They didn't have a lot of meetings. Yeah, me too.
Right. Five. I've seen governing board representative to the Pad Valley, so but. Um I kind of in a similar boat like I would like to continue because I. I feel like I'm basically starting to understand a little bit of what's going on unless of course you like the bikes taste on but.
I think I think we can do one line a year. In those roles, so you guys actually feel like we're working enough. I'm in there. I get, you know, so then that would have me on board policy, but I feel like Shania and I are getting our stride on that as well. But I agree, that seems fine.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll keep all those the same.
Yeah. The. Order of the board policy. In there, I use the board policy. Um by the trustee of revolving cash fund.
Asha. And also the flames and then the authorized signature.
Time against claims against the district. Uh five key authority, authorized signature, present, no line in the best school district.
Oh, isn't oh wait, that's.
We are and at the second meeting.
We do the signature card.
Right.
Yeah.
I just. Okay, cool. So then.
That. So I think I can just go move to and just don't we just you can just read out the title and then and. Person available. To prove it.
I'll give it a shot.
Cool.
So for item five appointments, I move that secretary of governing boards. And this to be Shay.
Second.
Or can I do all of them? I think it's all from. We're all kind of on the same page. Be governing board representative to Alameda County or association. Governings board representative to try to tell yourself, but to myself, Chris. Board policy, the board policy committee. Trustee of revolving cash fund in Shay. University of plans against the district, you Shay unauthorized signatures, authorized signatures are just an old one. The main such change.
So I'll second that.
Same thing.
We did the first in that one.
Um I. So then uh it's like that's that meeting in a nutshell with that record time. Actually, it'd all be that good. Or adjourn this meeting at five twenty three. I mean, bigger desk. Oh, I don't have to open this one. Here you go.
Yeah, you're in present now.
You got this. It's immediately?
Yeah.
The R said twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
I'm not I'm not wrong about that, right?
I already.
So I'm right. Oh, so I'm now running this.
Make sure that you read. You.
You. You. You remember that still.
Um first the roll call.
We're all here.
We're all here, Chris. Here and Ted. And one C public comment on closed session items.
Yeah, this time have no public comment.
No public comment, so we are going to move to. Number two, closed session. And then we will, we're gonna go to closed session and we will reconvene at six. We'll get it at six.
Do it. If there's much you want.
We are going to include the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Welcome. This board meeting will be held in person and it is also available on live stream. Public live stream can be located at the following link, which you can find on our website or in your agenda. Rules for public comments, education code three five one four five dot five and the Ralph M. Brown Act. Ensure that members of the public have an opportunity to address the board and any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, including items that are not on the agenda during regular meetings. Public comment during special meetings shall be limited to those items on the agenda. Individual speakers shall not, shall be allowed no more than three minutes to address the board. Public comments shall be limited to 20 minutes for each agenda item. However, in exceptional circumstances, when necessary to ensure full opportunity for public input, the board president may, with board consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted for each speaker. Any such adjustment shall be done equitably so as to allow a diversity of viewpoints. Anyone wishing to address the board needs to submit a comment prior to the start of the agenda item discussion. Comments will not be accepted for any items once the item has been announced. Public comments will be taken in the order they are received. Persons wishing to address the board shall first be recognized by the president and then proceed to comment as briefly as the subject permits. There will be an opportunity for public comment prior to board discussion on individual agenda items when that item is called. The comments from the community agenda item provides an opportunity for public comments on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board but are not on the meeting agenda. Persons with disabilities act reasonable accommodations. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, anyone needing assistance to participate in this meeting should contact the superintendent's office at nine two five eight six two two zero two six. Notification by Monday noon preceding the meeting will enable the district to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Please mute all your cell phones during the meeting. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Next item will be our approval of agenda, three C approval of agenda.
I've got two things on this one. I would like to move the discussion of the minutes for October fourteenth up to item six J so we can discuss it rather than keeping it as a consent item. And I'd like to break out for each of the warrants or for the submissions of warrants that are currently consent item seven B to separate out the items for votes for the Apple payments so that they're separate. I will be reducing myself in those payments approvals.
So will we leave those in a consent that we do without you then?
You can split them out. Yeah, we can do a separate consent items. That would, that's fine. I mean, I thought it.
And I would like to pull out the ones for Shamrock.
So I think I would say when we go to do the consent items, person I would review on Apple, you and I or Ted and I would review on Shamrock and then we will
Do the rest.
Do the rest.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Sounds good. If that is all, then we can move on with the approve, motion to approve the agenda with the following adjustments to move approval of minutes seven, eight up to
Six J.
Six J and then to itemize out the Apple and Shamrock report of checks into their own consent item to be voted on individually. All in paper?
Sorry, who seconded?
I did.
So we have nothing to report up, for three D, we have nothing to report out on the closed session item. But we are going to move along to number four, public comments, and we have one public comment. It's Rod Zeiss and come on up, Rodney.
Well, it starts a little different. I'm sorry, tell the board why I started going to meetings. When measure J was being trying to be fast, I wasn't know, my wife wasn't know. But someone actually went after my wife. Went and verbalized, was pretty, she was upset. Pissed me off, guess what? I'm here. That type of action is not acceptable, period. I didn't talk to the person I was after measure day fast. I had spoken to the person to apologize. But it pissed me off. The sad part was this school before you guys even got here, any of you had a reputation sometimes of having a clique and they go after people. It's well known, I should need to know where they used to hang out and have their means. It was obvious. That type of treatment is not what I like. This is why I go to these board meetings. Not because I'm angry for a certain agenda, it's how people treat each other. This board hasn't been fair. Period. Has not. I've seen you support things that fit your envelope and the story that you want. But if it doesn't fit, you don't address it. I came here two board meetings ago, I asked for an agenda item. Real simple, where are we? Are you going to address it? Because how you dress it or don't address it tells me what type of school this is going to be. Because how you dress it or don't address it tells me what type of school this is going to be. So if you don't. Guess what? That tells you what type of board you have. Now it's in the minutes or should be in the minutes. I wasn't here their last meeting. But it should be in the minutes. It's in your video. Again, I'm pointing out to you, I expect it to be addressed. Because. You need to have everyone a different perspective. The biggest thing I said about that whole thing I asked about. Was I had neighbors hating each other because they had different points of view. Well, guess what? If you're told two completely different stories of what happened, yeah, you're going to have a different point of view. Period. I'm asking you, hey. Maybe you should address this, the fact there was different stories being told out. Period. So I asked it for my agenda item. I'm looking forward to see what happens. I've used this personal information. Time to share with you that this needs to be addressed. And I'm tired of seeing categorizing people. I'm tired of seeing people trying to make someone else look bad. It's not really my goal. My goal is to make sure people treat each other fairness, dignity, respect. That's my words. You may use your own, but that's what my goal is. Thank you for your thought.
Yeah. Up next, if we have no public comment, then no more public comment than we have a sweeper and ten minutes before.
Right. I have a few things to share with us tonight. The first I wanted to talk about um, an update on the recall election. We recently received um, the cost and what the district owed. Um, the total cost um, was twenty six thousand, four hundred and sixty nine dollars, fifty one cents. Um, donations that were received to offset the cost of the recall election were twenty two thousand, two hundred and seventy two. So that left um, four thousand, one hundred and ninety seven, fifty one cents budget. And happy to report that ACOE Alameda County Office of Ed has agreed to cover that. So the net impact to the district is zero and it was fully covered. So. Great, nice uh, kind of Bozat loop. Um, and then move into just um, this month, our character trait is gratitude. And talk a little bit about some gratitude I have for our community. Um, first is our Sonoa Glen Community Club. Um, they just donated eight, a little over eighty one thousand dollars to the school. Um, the bulk of that money came from the Walkathon from this year. But other parts of the money also came from. Last year's hundred year celebration. Um, what we do with that money is it supports all of our digital apps and instructional software. Um, it goes to classrooms for supplemental curriculum and supplies. And then a large portion, because it is so much more than what we have received in the past, is we're going to start refurbishing Chromebooks. The last time we bought, for students, the last time we purchased Chromebooks was during COVID two thousand twenty. And it don't last that long and we're on the five, almost six year mark, six years actually. Two thousand twenty six. Um, and so we are, I know, so we are going to start refurbishing those. We'll start with middle school. Um, and then work our way down and come up with a plan, but super exciting. And just grateful for them. Um, the next area is our cafeteria with the colder weather and the rain. We have been heating in the cafeteria. And oh my goodness, it is wonderful. It is beautiful inside there. It's clean. There's no ceiling tiles falling. The kitchen is updated. All of the bathroom, we have an extra bathroom now for students, like. It's just amazing. Um, and we all fit in there perfectly too, actually with space left over. So really, really thankful for just the operational efficiency that. Our bond has made for this. And so I, it makes me even more excited for, I know we have a long road. Until the main building is done, but like so excited. Um. The next one is our counseling program. As you know, this is the first year that we are at. Um, I've been a full-time counselor on campus and I just want to highlight some of the things going on. Um, in there, um, we have social groups across all grade levels. Um, these are really helping students target how to work with others and they, we, sometimes students refer themselves. We have a lot of students who are referring themselves to the counselor, which is good. It means they know they have a place to go for support. Um, but also teachers and parents are referring. Um, and we do, he does a lot of short-term counseling check-ins with students. But he's also going into every single classroom once a month and doing social emotional lessons. So all students across the board um, are receiving social emotional um, training. And so really highlighting that school is not just about academics, about social emotional learning and working. You guys have heard me say a lot, the whole child. And really that's our aim. Also, he's working with um, one of our K one teachers who run the leadership. Um, group, which would move to a lunchtime activity, which is actually really positive because more kids are going to be, are able to join. Um, fifth graders are able to join in fifth grade, those doing that kind of stuff. In fact, they run kind of our character and assemblies. Um, we've also expanded our lunchtime activities beyond leadership. There's a game day in the counseling office that's very highly attended um, every Thursday. So just a lot of gratitude um, going that way. Um, and lastly, um, just wishing all of us, um, this community works hard to ensure our students and our staff gets what they need. And I'm just so thankful to be a part of it. Move on to the next one.
Right, moving along. Thank you for that. Number six, items to refer discussion and possible action. Letter A, public hearing, accounting of developer fees and approval of resolution twenty five. Two thousand twenty six fifteen, accounting of developer fees for twenty. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year for the following fund or account, fund twenty five. Capital facilities fund. Why do they all have to be the same number? You have to open the public hearing. So I will, at six thirty four, I will open the public hearing on accounting of developer fees.
I have no comments for personal, I think the resolution is fine. We should just go ahead and close it. Yeah.
All right, I move. I move to. I have to close the meeting and then approve. I'm going to close the public hearing on accounting of developer fees. At six thirty five. And going to move to approve the accounting of development fees. For resolution twenty five, twenty twenty six fifteens.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Moving right along. Number six B, measure J bond updates. Number one, review and discussion on measure J based project plan.
Me or me? Um, you got that, Matt? Uh, about two. Uh, agenda items to talk about on the measure J bond update for tonight. And first of all. Want to give you a brief overview of the three board items that just quickly discuss the three board items that are on your agenda for tonight. I'll wait till we get that back up.
You tap dance or something?
Yeah, we often call it tapped out, getting at the podium, but so you know. Can you go to page, to the next page and then? And, and you can make it full screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, this is the same version we have.
Yeah. Yeah. You, you got. But I just want to make sure you have it on there.
Sometimes anybody's last minute changes.
So um, so the board agenda items for tonight are uh. Fisher improvements projects and I, we actually have a deductive change order. We included an allowance. Of uh, five percent of the effect amount and it was not utilized during the course of the work. And so this returns the remaining allowance balance back to the district. So uh, it's a testament to the drawings being. Good, the contractor working well and the whole team working well. So we're bringing some money back. Um. We have a very small contract for Hamilton Aiken Architects and they're now helping us with the facilities master plan. They did a site walk with us recently. They're going to help us put the facility master plan together, which is a requirement for. Our proposition two funds and then you have the updated resolution from ISM advisors for the bond anticipation note. So let's see.
The right one.
The right one.
Right what we thought.
All right. Let's see.
No.
Yeah. Go ahead. You do it. Okay, so. What we mostly want to talk to you tonight about is the main building project and following up on the board study session. And um, we, uh, the superintendent and I and the architects and the contractor are, are. Following up by proceeding with the direction that we took from the board's meeting in, in two ways. One, the first being proceeding with construction and beginning the start of construction. But proceeding cautiously for any future. Funding to bridge our um, state loan, state funds. And so uh, we are proposing that we're starting construction in summer of twenty twenty six. Uh, that we will structure an initial guaranteed maximum price. Uh, that is within all of the measure J bond funds that will be available. After the board approves the bond anticipation note and we get the proceeds from bond anticipation notes. So all of measure J funds, about seven million dollars available for construction in phase one. And that future anticipated state funding will be required to uh, proceed. Uh, and we want to review some scenarios with you to talk about what that would look like. So this is the next page, right? So this is, okay, so um. Landmark construction is going to be starting subcontractor bidding. And we'll have a hit schedule that you'll see in the board's agenda packet. The bids are going to include multiple alternates. So that the, we can look at what the cost will be to add portions and hold those prices. Add portions of them back in when we get additional funding. And so we can bring those back at a future date. The primary board action. Would be for you to approve a guaranteed maximum price. And we're saying right now at our board meeting of March tenth. Any questions or comments about that? So we're going to go through this bidding process and we'll bring those back to you and we have a, next slide please, Manny. Um, can you um, highlight any, can these, any of these sections on the screen? Just so as an example, in, if you have the schedule, I know it's even small on the, on the printouts that you have. And I apologize for that, but you'll see the first bid advertisement would be going out on January sixth. There would be uh, no, subcontractor site visits, they would do outreach. So the subcontractor site visit would be on one fourteen. There would be two advertisements that are in accordance with the public contract code requirements. And you can see all the way through a subcontractor outreach, they would take. Um, they have a list of summary steps, like if there's an addendum needed, they'd issue it by a certain point, et cetera. And um, they'll review the guaranteed maximum price uh, with the district. Once you go all the way over to the farthest side over there, you can see some of the key dates, but ending up with um. A final phase review of the GMP at the end of February, preparing the board item in uh, March third. And then bringing the board item for a guaranteed maximum price to the tenth of March fourth. I apologize that this is such a hard schedule to read, but I want to make sure we at least had this in the record. Next slide, please. So. Um. And it's important for us to remember that the minimum work required in phase one is less than the minimum work. Scope that we originally identified and in the November seventeenth, the study session. The phase one scope will not provide a full project that can be reoccupied by the district. Okay, it's important to know that. So I mean, the reality is we're taking some risk by starting, but we think that the. Reward for the risk in terms of catching the market, starting the construction, getting the seismic work done. Is worth that risk and we think that it's a manageable risk and we'll talk a little bit about how we think we can manage that. Phase one and phase two scopes will give a complete building. Not all of the work we would like and I'll go, we'll go into that. But it would give an occupiable building and the required ADA improvements on the exterior that would allow us to occupy. Phase three scope is beyond our district budget at this time. And so let's look now at the next slide. This is a scope description. And you can see uh, phase one includes all of the seismic mitigation work on the project. So abatement, demo, structural concrete, structural steel columns, structural framing and carpentry. Removal of the roof and replacement of the roof, so full roof, new roof. In all areas, doors, frames, hollow metal doors and frames and material, installation of hollow metal frames. Storefront submittals and shops is they would do the submittals and prepare to put in the storefronts, but those would be put in as part of phase two. Drywall and finish. So they would go back after the installation of the. Steel columns and then the studs to cover and further wall off, they would go back and there would be a walls throughout the building. Full installation of the fire sprinkler system, all of the plumbing and rough in required for the bathrooms. HVAC submittals and layouts. So. One of the differences and one of the things we've done here and we, that landmark has done is that we've taken. HVAC system for the building and moved it from phase three into phase two. And this prep for it into phase one. So there, this structural work includes all of the block outs. And all of the work needed to accommodate the new units and the installation of the duct work. So we don't have to go back and rip anything out to put the full HVAC system in, which would give. You know, fresh air ventilation, heat, cooling, including feeding the auditorium. Uh, it includes electrical power and lighting and you'll see when we look at the GMP amounts in phase one, two and three that are on the next slide. That they've split up the electrical amount, which is actually the biggest subcontract, if you remember from the last time, one point. Two, three million and they've split that up into the three different phases so that can be awarded over time. You can see um, phase two and the scope of work for phase two is very extensive and a lot of it's finished work. As an example, I'm not going to read through the whole part, but it's all the wood flooring, linoleum, carpet, epoxy, interior paintage, painting. HVAC equipment, HVAC condensate piping. Um, and additional electrical work, including fire alarm, community, communication, uh, data, et cetera. And, and then phase two includes the site work and concrete for all of the ADA work that is out in front. So what's, what's?
The wheelchair lift is a.
Is it, is it in there? I just call it up.
Yeah. I know that's a big topic for you.
Yeah, it is in there. Um, so for phase three, what's not in our budget right now. Is some remaining interior finished trim and casework. The replacement of the historic windows and skylights, exterior painting of the building. Theatrical lighting. Remaining sight lighting and then all of the, what's called out as site work, concrete, landscape fencing. Any of the work that was shown in the original design for the front has been. But pushed off into phase three. I mean, to be honest, that's sort of the major value engineering move of getting us to a, a buildable phase one and phase two.
Okay. How much of the historical windows would be colored by the grant, not the grant, the, sorry, the.
Quarry.
Yeah.
I mean, we're assuming that the quarry money would be expended as part of the fully budgeted release of one and phase two.
Oh, it's phase one and two? Oh, it's phase one and two?
So the the windows themselves are not going to get replaced, though. At this time. So we're, we have a meeting that was originally scheduled for tomorrow, but it's now getting pushed off. Well, subcontractor that they have for windows is going to come to the site with us and do a walkthrough so we can categorize what is there a scope of work that we could afford to get? So can we just, can we just replace the sash? Could we just replace windows that absolutely need to be replaced that have been whether, are there some that are don't need it, et cetera? So that's.
Okay. Okay, but the the calculations of phase one and phase two assume that the full amount of the quarry money is going to be used in one and two?
Yes.
I feel like it's like the estimate was half. We're correct of what the total replacement of the windows would be, what the donation was.
So uh if you go to the next slide. So this is the estimate summary and shows the feet, the three different phases of work uh for landmark and you know, the bottom line number for phase one is six million nine twenty five eight twenty. And so that is within the measure J bond funds that would be available without any additional uh state or FEMA fund uh at this time. And then you'll see phase two, the next GMP add would be three million sixty four, four sixty five. And this, and I have a slide that shows this, but the sum of phase one and phase two is within our budget. If we receive all of our state funds or we do a bridge loan to it and eventually receive the state funds. And so uh our recommendation will be that we proceed with phase one. And then that we assume that we can transition and write contract amendments who incorporate phase two into the work in such a way as to not disrupt or stop the construction and have to start again. Uh so that's our, and that's what we're calling our best case scenario, right? This is, this is our approach and to get the work done. So uh next slide, please.
Landmarks on the same page in terms of like how that would potentially.
Yes, they are. They uh they worked with us on, I mean, I think they they're they're on the same terms of the transition and think on this kind of schedule we have for getting the the next round and keeping it um you know, because they want, what they want to do is they want to get bids from the subs now and be able to hold them. And you know, the reality of how long can you hold them? That that comes into play. So that's what's really going on here. So you can see the summary of the three phases of work and the total cost identified. If you add all those three phases on the bid sheet is twelve point eight million. Phase one and phase two, nine million, nine ninety, two hundred and eighty-five thousand and our total for all both phase that phase one. Uh and then our total budget for all of our, all that we have available, not including no, it's including all our state funds and FEMA is ten million, three sixty seven, seven oh eight. And we, we have decent news on FEMA, this looking like we'll be able to get some money. What we don't have any idea of, to be honest with you, is when we would actually get a check on FEMA. Um so we made some good progress on getting our projects identified and in line and and being processed. Um we're just holding our breath in terms of when will that check come? I'm not sure we can um say. So uh next slide, please. So the sequencing and the funding is is what I just described. Let me just try to do it one more time. We'd start construction in the summer of twenty twenty six. Additional funding, the best case scenario would be additional funding would come become available through a bridge loan to our state funds at a point at which we have an application that is on the workload list at the state allocation board. And it'll, by the time it has that, it will have an identified fund amount of of what their the state's share would be that they would provide for us. We anticipate that could be as soon as late summer or early fall of twenty twenty six. So and and in in terms of our sort of the district's interest here, if if we do a bridge loan to the state funds, our overall interest is to do that as late as possible. Frankly, because then we don't have to pay interest or any uh anything on the loan. Uh and it's closer to the time when we actually get the funds, so the loan doesn't have to last as long. So our interest is actually to push off the loan as far as possible. The contractor's interest and sort of our interest in continuity of construction is let's just get it as soon as we can, as soon as we have the most assurance. And in my experience with doing seismic applications, when we have an accepted application at the state allocation board, that's being processed by OPSC and it's on your workload list, we will eventually get funded for it. I'm, I can't guarantee that because they will never guarantee that either. So if we go to them and ask, do you guarantee we'll get this money? They're gonna say, no, we don't guarantee. But um in my experience, if we're listed on their workload list, we will very soon get placed on uh an approval list after going through all the funding uh processing uh pieces at OPSC. So I think what we're recommending is we should start the construction with the money we have available. Get as far as we need to to feel as certain as possible about the state funds that are coming and then enter into a bridge loan to bridge that funding. And it may be that uh the, again, if you recall the timing of the modernization application, it may be that we will have a lot less certainty about the timing of getting the nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand that we already have listed on OPSC's list. Because that's what we're going to take and put onto the small school district application. But when that comes, that may be longer out. The seismic funds will come, we'll have more certainty about the seismic funds much sooner. One good thing is that OPSC has a small school district program meeting tomorrow, which I'm going to attend. And they are proposing, they specifically heard from districts like ours that have projects on the modernization list that are going to pull them off and put them on the small school district list where there's a whole three hundred and fifty million dollars of new money available that's not already spoken for. And they are gonna, the the regulation now that they're proposing is that they would allow districts that do that to stay on both lists in case they, which so whichever one they could get processed on and get the money fastest, then would they would allow to stay there until they're funded on that one. And then so anyway, not not that you get it twice, it would just be you could stay on the list.
Faster.
And uh and so that's a good thing for us. Um, any questions on the timing?
Um, being on the workload list and approved for two different.
That's right.
So I I guess like, is there a considerable amount of time being on the work workload list before being approved?
There is, and there, once we, before the application gets fully approved by the board, as soon as it gets fully approved by the board, it it goes on to the top of the new construction seismic is seismic money comes out of the new construction part of state. So it would go to the very top of the new construction um list. And then it would wait for uh available state bonds to be sold. And it's what, it's a process then that's called priority and funding. Um and so projects that are on on the list down to the amount that board believes it can approve would go to the board, be approved for an apportionment. And then they would be notified when priority and funding round opens. And you would take, then we would apply for our funds for a fund release under that priority and funding. And that's a whole another step. So we're talking six more months often.
So there's kind of.
That's why the need for the bridge fund, because if 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 the process happened faster on a number of different levels, we wouldn't necessarily need that.
Just mitigating risks, thinking about like waiting until it's on the approved list, that's probably too late.
It's gonna be too late, I believe, in my experience. But I I I think what I'm what I'm asking the board to do, and I think that proposed direction is for us to be a little bit flexible uh and work with, we have a consultant in Sacramento that is carrying and bird dogging application also. Um and all of us get together and look at what what's happening with our application and when is the best time that we can feel the most secure about it? And then begin to put the process of pulling trigger on it, on getting the bridge funding. We need to keep the the contract going. Because remember, our overall expenditure rate, we, if we enter into a contract for a guaranteed maximum price with landmark for seven million dollars, they, if we won't be expending those funds, we will be doing monthly payment applications of it was for demolition phase, which will start, you know, four, five, four hundred thousand. I mean, we'll get up there when it gets hot and heavy into the million dollars a month. But we're talking about uh in well into twenty twenty seven before they start to even get close to exhausting funds uh in terms of what uh we've encumbered or we've committed to them. So it's um it's a complex situation. So I wanted to share sort of best case, worst case. Uh the proposed direction that we have is our best case scenario from a timing construction time and funding standpoint. So if if we start construction in summer of twenty twenty six and we and and things work out the way they, I believe that they can, we could reoccupy in August of twenty twenty seven with it with completed phase one and phase two. That's landmark's original schedule had been twelve months. That would give fourteen months because you take advantage of two summer, you know, two summer, two month periods and then all the rest of the year. So that's a really, that's a, that's a good schedule for us. From the standpoint of superintendents and the school and the students.
Disruption.
Disruption, that's what I meant, disruption. So worst case scenario, there's no money. We get no additional funds. I mean, we have to be honest, that that is a possibility. And then we would have to fall back and figure out where we're gonna get the money to finish the project. We would have a project that is stalled and that there's probably a construction fence around it. So this is the worst possible case that I can well, there's probably even more. They could have subcontractor defaults and we could have all sorts of things. I mean, but that's the worst possible case is we don't get any money. There's nothing from FEMA, there's nothing from the state or we can't get a bridge loan, whatever it is. So the building would stop and the construction would.
So from a practical standpoint, though, we're already in a position where we can't just ignore the seismic reality of the main building, which is if we do nothing and we hold and we keep holding and keep holding until it's perfect, then in let's say five, ten years, um we run the risk of an earthquake and it collapses on everybody.
We had an earthquake yesterday.
Yes, that's right.
At nine oh eight, yeah.
Right. So that's, so our our term, just to be very clear with people, the alternatives are not just wait for the money, not wait for the money, um hold or not, you know, go forward. But there is also the risk that the building collapses in an interim. And you lose people rather than just you know, cost. So I think that's really important that we keep that in mind, recognizing that there are, there is going to be a faction of of observers who will say, whatever you do, don't spend money you don't have and or don't, uh if you can't do it, just why don't we just hold off and return the money that we've gotten and you know, life goes on? Those aren't options realistically if the building falls down or the building is at threat of falling down. Recognizing that, we have to keep that risk, that that fallback risk of what happens if the, we don't get the money, it stops for a year, two years or however long it takes to get the money for the the additional phase two part of it versus the building collapses. And that I think is is a real risk in this community.
I agree. And thank you for.
I would agree too.
Reminding me of that.
My gosh, I mean, that's the risk is why the seismic upgrades are required. Because we don't want that risk to exist within a school with many with many people who utilize it every single day.
Yeah, our our structural engineering reports identified areas of potential collapse within the building and specific deficiencies that could lead to those issues. And the Division of State Architect concurred that the building had seismic deficiencies that could lead to potential collapse. And we have, we are on notice of that. And so the board does need to take action. I mean, that, and that's important to remember. There is another scenario, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, just to like kind of play out worst case scenario a a little bit, you know, like we're already in worst case scenario, buildings being worked on stops chained up or what not chained up though. And stuff, um we're already in relocated in other spaces, right? So I mean, yes, it's inconvenient, but we could continue.
School could, school could continue. And I think at that point, that's when we're in worst case scenario, that's when we start talking about, okay, if we can't get FEMA and state plans, do we go for another bond to do?
Or whatever is right, yeah, other other options, right? Okay.
So there's another scenario between worse than, worse than the best, which is that we, I, what I call it in the slide is a delayed funding scenario. So no bridge loan utilized, we wait for um the phase two work until we get our state seismic funds sometime in twenty twenty seven. Uh which would would end up with us that we probably have to be winding down work or be unable to award contracts that would be follow-on contracts, say for the electrical subcontractor that's awarded part one and is waiting for part two. So uh later approval of additional scope and GMP amendments and delay in finishing the work with additional funds. So that's, there, there's definitely a middle ground in there. And I I think we need to start, uh we'll be bringing the GMP back in March for the first phase, and then we'll have an opportunity in this wall of the, we were prepping for the work. So behind the scenes, we're still engaged in getting agency approvals that support our final application that will be required by uh OPSC. And we, today, we just got the California Geological Survey approval of the geotechnical and geo-hazard report for the main building. So check one off. I mean, we're good. Things are happening. We're at DSA. We can't apply for state funds without DSA approval. DSA will not approve without CTS. So we, you know, we're working through it and getting up to there. I think as we move forward in the spring and early summer, that's when we begin to look seriously at what what's the point at which we begin the process, uh the phase two funding.
So just to be clear on your slides there, the delayed funding scenario really is um no bridge loan is utilized or available or done. Um it only impacts phase two, doesn't.
That's right.
One. So I think it's important to recognize that that is distinction there. So you can still get the building structurally sound.
That's correct.
Just delays. Uh ultimately, if you choose, if if it's determined that we need to wait on the bridge loan versus taking the bridge loan on the assumption that we are comfortable assess um and other, I said governmental statewide um assessments, if you will, are available to us. So, okay.
So if we wouldn't be able to occupy the building.
Right.
But the seismic work would be done.
That's important.
Yes.
To go.
Yeah, I don't understand. It'll be standing. We would eliminate at least one risk.
We eliminate the 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 risk.
Shape arc would be centered, okay?
But we, but ultimately, we would eliminate the risk to students eventually going back into that building. We would just delay the number of months or whatever period of time that they're already in temporary.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
All right. That's that's all my presentation for tonight. I did include the architects plans again if we needed them for any reference work, but uh, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, that's it?
Yeah, four more items.
It was supposed to be on the.
I do like the next one. Or three more items. Measure J bond updates, B two, review, discussion and press election. Deductive change order number one to the agreement with Cal State Construction for the kitchen improvements project in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Signed, changed order attached.
This is giving us money back, so.
Yeah.
No real discussion on this one.
I read it twice because I'm like, um, do change orders work backwards?
Yeah, it's kind of amazing, actually.
I feel like I don't see that very much in construction where you get, you get some of the money back that we didn't use at all. So.
Just, just to recall, like when we afforded this contract, like way, way back when, it was the cheapest. If I was.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, so I was kind of surprised to see this. I was like, really? Wow, okay.
And they did a great job, so there you go.
They were very responsive. So wins, wins all around. And we definitely could use that money back for other projects.
True.
So I move to approve the change order number one, agreement with Cal State Construction for the kitchen improvements project.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Number three, review discussion, potential approval of amendment one. To agreement for independent consultant services from Hamilton Nakin Architects for the bond support services fiscal impacts, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. See amendment.
That's fine with that one. I think this is nothing in the great things, things that need to be done and people that can do it.
Yeah. All right. I move to approve the amendment number one to agreement for the independent consultant services for Hamilton and Akin.
I'll second it.
All in favor? So for our net item, I'll read it and then we do have one comment. So review discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty five, twenty twenty six, fourteen. Authorization issuance and sale of twenty twenty six general obligation bond anticipation notes in the maximum principal amount of four million dollars. And we have Ken Horton.
Thank you. First, I appreciate the real discussions you guys were having tonight. I think some of those are very long overdue. Some of those probably should have been. During the measure J campaign and putting measure J out. Or over the last couple of years. So we're way behind. We're behind by about two years, but thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I was at a meeting here. And, uh, Mr. Eisen was talking about the cost of the bonds. And it seemed like one of the board members, if not all. Were caught off guard that there's a cost to the bonds. I've got notes over there that go back a year, a year and a half or two years about the cost of the bonds. Being issued, what have you. And that is one of the ways issuing the bonds. How the school gets interest from the bond sales before the bonds are used for construction. So I, I don't know if. Somebody was playing a game the other day, or if you guys aren't familiar with how that works, but. Uh, Mr. Savage had explained that in meetings a year and a half, two years ago. And if you're not up to date on how that works, please get up to date so we all understand it. Um, if you don't like Mr. Isom, I don't know the guy. Find somebody else if they give you better timing on the bond sale. If they give you better interest and if the cost of the bond sale is less. That's not my, uh, for, for me to research and find out. But if you have a problem with that, I would suggest looking early instead of late. Um. And if Mr. Eisen's not the best guy, again, somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, we're not missing him for the discussion.
No, so the, this resolution is, is the one. At the November meeting, the special meeting, which we asked to be delayed to be corrected for certain language errors that were.
Just, yeah, revisions.
The resolution. I think to address Ken's point, I, I think that the, it may have been a confusion, uh. As to what was actually at issue, the issue, at least the one I discussed with, with, uh, John.
A listing though?
It was how it was presented, um, in terms of the, the appendix where it describes the. You know, if you go out for a four billion dollar, sorry, four million dollar, sorry, you see them B's not M's. A four million dollar, uh, bond or a, a notes offering. Um, how the calculations that he used for purposes of setting that, um. In theoretical, you know, amounts out and what's premium and what's not and stuff like that. That was the issue that was at play. That it wasn't that bonds costs, bonds do cost, the, the cost of issuance, there's legal fees, there are. Uh, printing fees, there's, you know, marketing, et cetera. That's all, I think, I think well understood and, and stuff. But it was just simply the presentation of the calculation and, and how that calculation was done. And that was something that. I'd asked him to clarify with us exactly what, what he's putting to premium and he did that to us.
Yeah, they, that was what was emailed out to all of us to reveal.
So we did get that answer. Uh, but again, it wasn't a function of not understanding what a cost of bonds is or what constitutes the, the costs. It was really a function of how it was presented in the material. So that, that's listed to me. That was my issue and that was what I wanted to have been clarified because I want to be very clear. Because presumably, general public is not a bond lawyer or a bond financier and doesn't necessarily, or an investor for that matter. In municipal bonds and doesn't understand necessarily the aspects of what those tables and how those things read. And what, what it really means. So that was what I was trying to get at and at least and to clarify for us to make sure that we were seeing it the same way. That was my answer to that. So.
Thank you for sounding completely different from your conversation.
Okay. Well, I apologize for that. That's, that was the intention, at least for mine.
Um, the other thing that I wanted to just reiterate, I think we mentioned it every time, but the original ban resolution had expired. So we're looking to review that.
That's right.
And, and edit to this one. And so.
Right.
So it's, it's back here.
That's right.
That's great. I mean, nothing real on it change. We just were revising from the previous month.
Correct. It was, that's, that's list so far as I can read. As I read it, that was what I saw. It's the, there are only basically the changes that I asked you made.
And so those changes have been incorporated and I think that puts us all in the position to now start moving forward on it. I motion to approve the resolution number twenty five, twenty twenty six, fourteen, authorizing the issuance of sale of twenty twenty six. General obligation bond anticipation notes in the maximum principal amount of four million dollars. All in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Pay motion. All right. Moving to number six, item C, report discussion and possible action to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. First interim report presented by Cheryl Kaiser. All right, red circle.
You wanna get it tight?
Way around. The circle is important. I looked for a new graphic. I told Shay, I looked for a new graphic and I couldn't find anything and I'm like, oh, it works. Did you say the right side? The circle lets us know where we're at and what's coming. Yeah. Here we go. All right. So seven percent increase in total revenues from the budget adoption. Now, some of this you will have seen before because we did forty five day, you guys. That's a less formal presentation and this is the formal reporting period. So some of this will be a little bit of a recap for you guys. Um, adoption is, uh, since budget adoption, it's driven by increased revenue forecasts for Eagles Nest and preschool. Which we hadn't seen when we did the forty five day revise and very generous, um, community donations. So most of the money that we see on the upside. Is local money. Five and a half percent increase in expenses. A lot of that you'll see when we get to the detail is supplies. And that is driven by, um, are funded by carryover and donations. So money that was left over from last year. From donations mostly, and then the new donations, um, mostly that came from community club. Funded those supplies and, um, services and other operating exp- uh, expenses. Improvement in tw- by a twelve percent in the beginning fund balance. We moved from one point four eight million to one point six six million. So more money to start with. More revenues and we'll see that all flow down to the bottom line. So the reserve, um, the, uh. Unassigned balance in the reserves moved up from fourteen thousand dollars, which was very, very tight to two hundred and twelve. And then you will see that flow all the way through year three.
You breathe a little bit, just a little bit.
So, um, just comparison again, just the revenues budget versus first interim. Um, LCFF dollars are up twenty seven thousand. Um, the small, it's a very small increase. Higher UPP, which is the, um, increases the supplemental grant. And mostly driven by increase in the TK add-on funding. That went up, uh, twenty four hundred dollars per ADA. So that makes a fairly big difference in the LCFF number. Federal revenues decreased slightly. It's just under two thousand dollars and it's really adjusted. This grants were just a little bit smaller and mostly adjusted by ADA. State revenues increased twenty two percent and that's posted by that stu-, uh, I don't know. We call it the spud bug. Seventy one thousand dollars there. That's what someone named it and I'm like, okay, that works. Um, student support and professional development grant is what it really is. And then we also receive, um, a special ed grant, which is early intervention preschool grant. Now is about twenty one thousand dollars. Neither the, um, block grant nor the special ed grant were budgeted originally because we did not have those numbers at the time. So we didn't want.
That, that was a possibility to get them and we just didn't include them or.
We knew we were getting the, um, block grant, that they did not have numbers to know how much we were getting. So abundance of caution.
Sure.
We don't include. And then the special, um, ed early intervention. That grant is given based on a number of students, I believe, with IEPs in first grade. So we can calculate it, but to be honest, it's money that as a smaller school, we have very hard time spending. Uh, because it's very defined how you can spend it and what you're allowed to spend it on. So while we see that as an increase in revenue. We don't really see an increase in expense to offset that because it's very hard for us to spend it. Okay? Um, the local funding increased again by the updated forecast for Eagles Nest and preschool. Those were up ninety thousand dollars from budget. Um, we received an increased grant in the EDI, uh, about forty thousand, I think. Is that right Shay? And then the community sport, support from the, um, donations for supplies, educational software. Field trips from supply driving, some, some community club totaled around eighty nine thousand dollars. So very large increase to local money. The expenses, uh, certificated salaries are flat to budget. Um, classified increase is unbudgeted vacation payout. And then the benefit increase is the benefits that go along with that increase in the classified budget. You can see the large increases, um, in supplies. Um, and services and other operating expenses of about hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, uh, combined. And that is, as I said, funded mostly by carryover and then the increases in the donations. So we, when we receive a hundred dollars in donations for supplies, we put in a matching one hundred dollar expense budget. So that teachers, classrooms, whatever, have that money to spend and it's budgeted. So those probably look a little big and we will see those decline over the year and then. Some of that, again, will drop to the bottom line for sure. Um, but we'd like them to know how much money they do have available, um, rather than budget it as they spend it. It's just gives them more flexibility. And is a fear to manage. Uh, the increase in the capital outlay is the remaining dollars from the kit grant. That was supposed to expire in June twenty twenty five. They gave us an extension to June twenty twenty six. So they're just wrapping up spending that money as they finish the projects in the kitchen. Slide that, there you go. Thank you. Okay, so we see the increase in beginning fund balance, um, which leads to a direct increase in the ending fund balance. We didn't see that much increase in the expenses, et cetera. And what, what's important here is that all the reserves are covered. So you've got four thousand in result, in revolving cash, um, six, six, uh. Hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars in restricted balance. And then your stabilization agreement of a hundred and eighty thousand, your other assignments of a hundred and fifty thousand. And your reserve for economic uncertainty of two hundred and forty nine thousand, that totals one point two. Leaving you two hundred and twelve thousand dollars that is unassigned at this time, right? Higher beginning fund balance, improved revenue outlook, lower deficit spending. More money that just falls to the bottom line that's not in a reserve. Enrollment in ADA, twenty five, twenty six enrollment is stable from the budget estimate. Last year, our, um, enrollment estimate was not great. Worked very hard with Shay's team this year to be tighter on that estimate and we came in much, much closer. Um, so that's good because that caused some revenue changes last year, um, at this time, which we did not want to see again. P two ADA changes across those periods, changing with the, um. With the enrollment numbers. Um, we use a simple cohort progression model for. Twenty six, twenty seven and twenty seven, twenty eight. Um, the funded ADA is the average three year rolling balance, uh, for P two. Um, as we progress across those years, those higher ADA years that we experienced before twenty four, twenty five. Roll out of that and that's why you see those bigger declines year over year.
And that will, if, if for some reason we got a boom and, you know, hundred new students showed up on top of it and we then take the highest.
We would take that year.
That year.
Mm-hmm. So it's prior year, prior three year average or current year.
Whatever's up.
Whatever's the best. Okay. Um, and the risk in the estimates for enrollment from my perspective. Is that we are, um, filling the pipeline at the bottom with TK. And so we expect seventeen to eighteen TK students every year in those out years. And we're, you know, there's a little bit of risk in that. Here's your multi-year projection and I realize I left out the slide with all of the, uh, factors that we used. Um, but we use a variety of factors, most of them supplied to us by school services. So COLA across those years is two point three for twenty five, twenty six, three point two, twenty six, twenty seven. And three point four two in twenty seven, twenty eight. And we'll see in the last slide. That we're seeing some softening of those out year COLAs. We don't know exactly what they're going to look like yet, but they're probably not going to be. Um, in the threes.
What's driving that?
It's an economic factor and it's a calculation and it has nothing to do with the state. So, um, as those numbers change. I, I can tell you what, it's, it's some fiscal indicator. I can't remember what the name thing is, but it's eight quarters. And as they calculate across the eight quarters, they come up with the COLA. So as we've said, twenty five, twenty six looks good. Those numbers roll in twenty six, twenty seven. We see a lessening of the deficit by a little bit and that's because the expenditures are down. And what we do when we do the NYPD is we go through from an expenditure perspective. We use CPI for books and supplies and things like that that are purchased. For, um, salaries, we use the, um, step and column rate, which we can calculate with our financial system. And then the benefit rates that go with those, um, we have estimates for, uh, STIRS is the same nineteen point one across those years. And then we have a pers rate that changes slightly, um, from year to year. But then we look at all of the other expense lines and take out things that we know are coming out. So we know this is a one-time expense. So we're going to take that out. For insurance, what we've seen from year to year is that that goes up about twenty percent. So for insurance, we put in a twenty percent factor. Um, we, uh, recently chose a new auditor and that is a dramatic price decrease for us. Um, so we're down thirty five, forty thousand dollars from this year to in, in twenty six, twenty seven and then twenty seven, twenty eight. So that is a nice savings. Um. And then what you see when you get to twenty seven, twenty eight is again, we had a lot of risk in the budget. We weren't covering all of our reserves. In twenty seven, twenty eight, we do cover all of them. But the amount that is unassigned is shrinking. So we're down in twenty seven, twenty eight to thirty five thousand dollars, which is very, very tight. Great. Here are your other funds. There you go. Not a lot of information here. Uh, revenues largely except for from the cafeteria largely just come from, uh. Interest earnings. The cafeteria is the federal and state reimbursement for the universal meals. Um, and then just, uh, the cafeteria is its basic expenses, the people that we pay for to serve the meals. And then the food that's purchased for the student meals. All right, looking ahead. Governor's budget for twenty six, twenty seven will be announced in January. As I said earlier, um, some decline is expected in the actual COLA. Estimate I saw recently was two point four two for twenty six, twenty seven. Um, P one attendance is due in January and that'll help to validate our current projections. Cause we look at the enrollment numbers and then apply whatever that ADA percentage is to the current enrollment to forecast out for the out years.
Uh, how are we looking?
For attendance?
P one attendance, yeah.
Good. We, um, actually this year, we moved on the dashboard when I share and do our, um. State of the district, you'll notice, um, for chronic.
State of the district, you'll notice um for chronic absenteeism. We have shrunk, however, we do have students who are really struggling this year, so we might see it go back next year. Terms of overall enrollment, though, we are kind, we have kind of found our right size. Our K through third grade are pretty much full. Um TK, we could have maybe three or four more students get to twenty. It's in our middle school where we could have more students. Um, but often you don't get students during that.
So continued review of projected enrollment in ADA. Revenues and expenses for current year twenty six, twenty seven and twenty seven, eight, twenty seven, twenty eight. To assess and adjust those ending balance estimates. Changes that increase expenses, decrease revenues, threaten the ending balances and make the Y three estimates more precarious. And then I'll be back in March.
So can I ask you?
Yep.
And maybe this is also for Shay. Areas of expense that, you know, we could be cut and reduce um just at a macro level would. I mean, you you noted in your summary on the report that, you know. Obviously, we're continuing deficit spending, et cetera. Um, and then we should focus on where we can, you know, cut back on expenses and so. What are you seeing as areas that might be ones that that could be cut? Um, that you're, from your perspective at least, where you think like, hey, this may be an area to focus on.
You know, from at this ju- juncture. I can't estimate that. Shay and I have basically a weekly conversation and we look at what the options are and then we size them. So we have a list of things that may be possible. Um, but we need to size them and see what their impact is.
Okay, okay.
I think um to add to that, wanna look at like programs and where will cuts. Still leave a program for students and where, meaning we can cut from that area, but still will prepare, be able to provide the service. Or provide in a different way the the program for the students.
Got it.
Yeah, you wanna find the value in the programs um that you wanna preserve. That makes sense.
Trying to find things that don't affect kids.
My other question is only really functioning on one. Are you actively doing it? It sounds like you are. If there are broad brush, broad brush or broad stroke kind of areas that you can say, well, you know. That X is something that you could definitely target. Um, it sounds like you you're not quite there.
We're not because we've done most of that work already and that's already come to the board. So for example, the the new, we finished our contract with the one audit firm, we realized it was extremely high. Um, we went ahead and moved someone else. Um, but we had some attrition of personnel retired. We did not hire that back, so without we right sized and by right sizing, that's a term the district use. How many students you have to how many personnel. Um, there also, we were using some one-time COVID funds that had to fund other personnel, which ended. Um, so that was a layoff we went through last year, so. And there were other programmatic cuts that we've done in terms of shrinking down just what we're buying with our curriculum. Making sure that we either have multi-year contracts or one year, so those type of things we have done already. So now we need to look at the programs out of as a whole.
There was a service that uh or somebody you had, somebody that you.
Yes, the contractor, we had a contractor. The policy and the LCAP, which um we ended that contract and I'm handling that.
When you're small, it's hard to be broad brush, right? Because your budget in every category is pretty snug. Um, so it's more targeted than that and it's it's a constant process.
You can stop eating the pool.
You can stop eating everything. I don't vote for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, does anybody have any further discussion matters? Okay, I move to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six first interim report. All in favor? Six D. Report discussion and possible action to approve this snowpland governing board policies, C S D update September twenty twenty five.
Uh, I have one question and that was. So in the materials that were provided, we we got the markup to the C S V A's versions of the policies, right? And we got the cover saying, uh, you know, basically. What changes were and then separately, we got from you all the kind of description of what you opted to change from.
Right.
But we didn't get a copy of the actual version. Or any version of what our version would look like.
So would you, a couple of things, would you like this to come back in January, you got clean version?
Well, so my question would be first. Is it only like? The base from which our version was working. Is it essentially the same as what?
Yes.
So there's no real material difference of that.
No, there's not.
Okay. Then in that case, I think that it it would be okay to approve it. But if, you know, there are some policies that we have where we diverge, if you will, to some degree from the C S V A's version. Uh, and then those, I think we need to see what our version looked like as a result of the changes, rather than just the changes that are.
Delete noted and then writing it down.
That's my only comment.
Okay.
We start with a different policy than what there's.
Right, I just.
Right, right, there was not, there was not.
I mean, I just know for there are other policies that we have where we specifically crafted something and what I don't want to have happen is that. Negotiated version or gets lost virtue of just simply a.
Something new that was redlined.
Yeah, right, um and then if that, if there is such situation like that, that's primarily probably in the board bylaws and then then in the policies. But if it is, then I think we should see, we should be including that. Okay. Uh, I'm good with these.
North and Chris?
Yeah. I'm going to approve the.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Report discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty five, twenty twenty six, sixteen, Snowpland Unified School District Board signatures. So I move to approve resolution twenty five, twenty twenty six, sixteen.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Fix F, report discussion and possible action to prove change to classified substitute rate.
Okay, so yeah, our substitute rate for all classified positions, no matter what they're doing. Has been eighteen dollars an hour for several years. Um, and looking, I did some research on surrounding districts on what they're offering. And our base at eighteen for everything is very low. Um, most districts have moved to the jobs they're doing. So for example, if they're substituting for the school secretary, they would get step one of the column in that. If they're um substituting for the custodian, they would get step one of what the custodial rate is in the column. So this would move our classified substitutes to the step one of the position they're covering. Um, doing this for a couple of reasons, we have an extremely difficult time. Um, in our small community finding classified subs. And I do believe that part of that is due to the cost. Typically, our classified subs are um parents who would be around the school and will continue having them as subs. But in the event when they're not there, what happens is the position goes unfilled and then we're scrambling to try to keep operations going. Um, this is not a negotiated item, however, we collaborated heavily and met with C S E A. Um, they were in full support of it. Um, any questions?
In the table, the number, the twenty step one, for example, with the computer tech, step one, twenty six, that's dollars per hour, is that the?
Right now, we actually don't have a computer tech.
Doesn't really have a financial impact, right? We would be paying this if or we budget to pay this in.
Right, exactly, and the financial impact was small compared to the benefit of it. Of having, yeah, having that work on in those positions filled by our operations.
Questions, all right. I move to approve the change to classified substitute rate.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Six G, report discussion and po- possible action to approve salary schedule with updated board approval and effective dates for. C S E A and A F T.
All right, right, um in doing the audit from our classified management. We found out from Calpers that it did not have a board effective date and also, or board, excuse me. A board approval date and then effective date. And so just ensuring that our other salary schedules are also compliant. And now bringing these so that they would have a board um approval date and an effect date on it.
And just to be clear, the the substitute rate which we just approved is now also in G.
Okay, that doesn't have to be listed on there, but we have always. It's not a fine issue.
Any questions, guys? All right, I move to approve salary schedules with updated board approval and effective days for C S E A and A F T.
All seven.
All in favor?
Sorry, that was Ted seconding.
Six H, report discussion and possible action to approve certified management M O U and salary schedule.
Right, this year um was the first year we have a certificated manager, certificated means it's on. Teaching side for have have a credential, um and we did not have an M O U. Um, to outline our agreements. And so in using the M O U that is already approved by the board for C S E A management. Drafted one for certificate management, also put it through our legal team. So I'm bringing that to you for review, any questions?
I have one question in the leave section. Talks about uh, there's a me too clause applies to any negotiated changes affecting certified. A certified teaching staff which shall likewise apply to certificated management. Does that exempt you? You know, because you don't have.
My, I am not under this M O U.
Okay.
Because I have a separate superintendent to have a separate contract, this would be solely, for example, program coordinators under it. Not plannages, but let's say we had a vice, we did a new job description of vice principal. Um, any other management position that would be certificated.
Okay. So, and that's clearly understood by everybody who looks at this.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I believe the same same wording or same same phrase.
It is, it is.
Yeah, because this one was, because the previous one was used to build up this, yes, okay. I move to approve the cert- certificated management M O U and salary schedule. All in favor?
Hi.
I. Motion approved. Moving right along, six, I report discussion and possible action to approve the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, Snowpland School Calendar.
This doesn't work for me.
Um, the count, just so you know, the process, the calendar is first um from our A F T. That is our labor partners with certificated. They um propose a calendar, um then management reviews it as if there's any changes, they send it back. It had no changes, then our C S E A partners review it, so all parties agreed. And then we bring it to the board for final approval.
I move to approve the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, Snowpland School Calendar. All in favor? Our muscle.
Trying to make my voice sound like Ted too, to make it really difficult.
All right, and now we have moved the approval of minutes up to six J. So we are taking approval of minutes out of consent items and we have one last uh discussion on the approval of minutes.
So, I asked for this and and I will say that first off, um, we're we're getting the November seventeenth minutes. At the next. All right.
For the special meeting, yes.
Okay, um. I I I. I would like to suggest that that the October fourteenth minutes. Be reviewed one more time to make sure that they are correct. For example, uh, the October fourteenth minutes have a footer that says September ninth, twenty twenty five board meeting minutes. So that's an example where it needs to be cleaned up. Uh, under the closed session items, it doesn't match the agenda that was actually distributed. Um, because the closed session agenda item, I believe, had three items in it. Two, which I think there was a a conference of legal counsel was on there.
Yes, yes.
So that's not listed um there, so I think that's another one where it needs to be fixed. Let's, what else I see? On item, the first five Alameda County Early Development Instrument. Um, this is item eight E. Was there a board vote approval on this? I wasn't here, so.
No, oh, that is money they are giving to us.
Right.
Right, and so there was no approval, I'm trying to think if the approval was, yes, there was approval needed on that.
So it doesn't say that there was ever approval on that, so that one needs to be fixed. Under the. Yeah, there, like, even. Yeah, so I think that that would be good to go there and fix that at ten A, I would make it clear that if. Is Chris's description of the cell phone report or the cell phone meeting. It has the board approved the allocation plan, I think it was the cell phone board, you better hear that, I think that needs to be made clear. And there's a typo in the prior steps there too. So I just, I think it would be wise to have another set of eyes go through it, clean it up. Um, as we kind of get better at this process.
Yes.
Work.
So then we will, we will bring back the October, the November and December meetings to January. If the board.
I would agree with that.
Gone for one meeting.
Well, look, if I had been there, I would have been able to give you more feedback, but I wasn't at the meeting, so there you go.
All right. So we can go to consent items. Somebody, my awesome new computer is not letting me get the number on the Apple, I wanna know which. Can I just state that we're going to pull out the Apple one and vote without it, or do I need to state the date and the?
No, you can just pull it.
I was gonna say, I can't pull up the date and the amount.
There were two, there were two Apple ones.
I have them right here. Because the Apple computer said, no, you can't have that information in this room.
I do think you can just pull it out, but.
Yeah, let's, I. So for our, is there one?
There's two Apple ones.
Okay.
There's two yours or it's just one, oh, just one.
Okay. So for check number five one nine, seven nine, four eight five, Apple. For technology licenses in the amount of seven, eight, seven, that uh fifty cents. And. Okay. And check number five one nine, six eight, seven two six, to Apple Inc. For technologies MacBook in the amount of twenty two thousand, six hundred and forty one and ninety five cents. Ted is going to accuse himself.
Accusing myself?
And I move to approve. Those consent items.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion to approve the two Apple checks. Okay, motion to approve the two Apple checks, then. Chris, can you point me where the? It's Shamrock number one.
Oh, there is two, it's all the same, um, so it's on. Check stated ten, one to ten thirty one. And it's. Five one nine. Seven one nine.
What was it, Robert?
Ten, ten twenty one, twenty twenty one.
Twenty one, I think it's thirty one.
Sorry, yeah, I was trying to get to a page, but that.
Page two of four of the October.
There you go. And twenty one.
Is it under a different name?
Flex print, sorry, flex print.
Oh, flex, okay, oh, there we go, doing business session, okay, so. There's that one, did you say there was a second one?
There is. The next page.
Doing business, I see it, okay, so consent items. Check number five four nine, seven one nine two four for flex print intermediate LLC, also known as Shamrock Office Solutions. Technology copier in the expense amount of five fifty one twenty five. And check number five one nine, seven five, one three three, no, I'm sorry. Five one nine, seven five, one three four, flex print intermediate, doing business at Shamrock Office Solutions. In the amount of forty five dollars for shipping for toner. For those two consent items, Chris will recuse himself and I move to approve those consent items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I approved. Okay, now.
For everything else.
All the rest of the consent items, I move to approve the remainder of the consent items.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved all the way down, including some really great donations, absolutely, okay. Let's go to the board reports, first is eight A, Tri Valley Sopa Report.
Yeah, I just had a quick um note from, uh, there was a special meeting where Tri Valley Sopa was held. Last month, and um it was just a meeting to go over real quick the reduction in. Project, so unfortunately, they moved a, what was it, I'm trying to remember off top, sorry, it was like, uh, the director of the Sopa was moved. From a director three to a director two, so there was a reduction salary there and then the. Count services technician, yeah, or specific title, but um. Was moved from a uh FTE one point O to an FTE seven, uh, point seven five, so reduction salary for two positions there. Got there, so, no, but that was it. No other items around the agenda, just lengthy discussion about how we save money and try to figure out what's going on, so. Um, it's all temporary, right, like, so if everything um looks up.
All right.
Eight B, Alameda County School Board Association Report.
So um, there was a meeting on the thirteenth of November, um, it was uh primarily focused on federal actions and um countywide readiness for purposes of dealing with. Both federal actions um against the local districts and then also um funding issues and federal funding cuts. Um, the good news is that despite the administration's attempts to cut uh federal funding and and obviously and the press have seen a lot of that. Um, for California, it's been pretty uh ineffective, um, and in at least so far, and it has allowed for. Um, while there have been delays, a lot of the federal money is is still coming in, uh, despite the the, you know, bluster from the administration. So that's positive, uh, for us, it's not as significant because we get such a small amount of federal funding, um, but it is obviously impactful in Alameda County as a whole. Um, there was also discussion about ICE raids and and how to address that, um. Largely that again hasn't been significant in Alameda County, unlike San Francisco where it was threatened or even Los Angeles where it was in San Diego, it's been carried out, but. Um, but obviously, the key takeaway is from the viewpoint is that, you know, to the extent that. ICE shows up at your school, you know, there is, the first line of response should be to demand IDs and and a judicial warrant. Um, the second line of response is to call the police and lock down the school, um, so to ensure that they don't barge their way in um and respond. Uh, that way, next thing to do is it's really important to document or film what's been, what's happening, obviously not physically doing anything to. Bar uh law enforcement, but to make it very clear that that you're keeping track, you are, you are allowed to film. Um, and that's legally allowable and film, so uh that's important. Um, another thing to note is that uh with the passage of Senate Bill ninety eight, um, there is going to be a need to revise. Uh, our policies with respect to procedures relating to how to notify um parents and and uh guardians. Uh, if there is uh an ICE uh raid or if there is um ICE on camp in an area.
Right.
Um, and so that needs to be done by the first of March, so just to. Flag that for you all, um, and then there were, that was um kind of the key takeaways from.
You have to go to a meeting.
Finally, I know. Boring too.
Oh, it was that day?
Yeah, it was that.
Another day. All right, all we have left is the calendar. Um, January, February, March, those days, I say April too. No. And April, so.
I just wanted to highlight from Bill's uh presentation, March tenth is that you're looking at a boarding contract.
So it is coming up, it's coming up soon, and two more meetings before then.
Um, and then April fourteenth is that, when, when does um the April break?
Balls before that, like that's immediately before the first uh days of the. The spring break.
I I mean, I knew it would be on the same week.
Yes, the exact, oh, it's the sixth to the tenth, the week before this, that we'll come back from break and then we'll have that meeting. And then I, let's see, I feel like it's the same thing, no, in February, we will. Have the, February, we will have the meeting and then two weeks later we call break, so break is pretty far away from the February one. Okay. Closing comments.
Congratulations, you did a great job.
Yeah.
Much better than that.
All right, I mean, yeah, I'm interested in seeing what other demands of putting the, putting agendas and other responsibilities take on this next year. And wanna, you know, applaud, applaud our swiftness through what we have to work through and we work well, and if I look at it as an entire year, you know, we've now. Served one calendar year together and I think it's been really smooth with a lot of respect. And I'm not going to pretend like we aren't tasked with some really difficult things where there's decisions that we're really having to uh to. To ask the, to ask the administrators in our school and all of the um. All of the people that, all the, what am I trying to say? The, not necessarily contractors, consultants, for all of our consultants have worked really hard for us. And have listened to what the board has asked, like, not just answering our questions, but we said, get valuationary on this, we want to look deeply at. You know, lips and options and save us money here and we, I think as a board, I think we felt really heard by that and that when you guys bring it to us every month. Um, no, I believe in magic, but it looks like you guys have really been making, making some, making some things happen that. Months ago did not look like they were possible, so that's been a lot of work and I I appreciate that because like I said, these decisions are hard. And when you guys start to really work things financially to make it more viable for us, our whole, our whole school benefits, right? We get the things that we need, we get a safe main building and um and our board feels like we are making good decisions to keep our. Keep our district headed in a successful direction.
And it's very clear you're proud of your students and.
Absolutely, we've got, had some amazing things go on this year with the counselor and, you know, Akathon and. The the money that we've brought in and the community that we've built and I can even say, you know, throughout the school, like the school community is flourishing, like. We are, you know, people in our school and in our district should be like proud and excited to, you know, have such a thriving district right here in our little town.
I would say uh that, you know, now that you are president, um, you know, to keep in mind that that very fact that the the. Where we are now, I suppose where we were a year or two years ago, it's such a market difference, it's so much better now and improved. Um, you know, the goal of the board of all of us is to lead the district into the future, not fight over issues of. Two years ago or three years ago, especially when they've been settled by the fact that you're now on the board and the board's direction is is focused in a positive direction. You know, again, taking into account the best interest of students and the faculty and parents, not necessarily just anybody who randomly says a comment or here or there or whatever, so I think it's really important that. We stay focused on what's in the best interest of all the students and families and the moving the school forward and not. Revisiting or fighting over trivial things from the past, uh, so I think as you set the agenda, because you're president, you will, you and Shay will set the agenda. That you recognize that it's not, you know, the tyranny of the minority, it's for the majority that you set the agenda and work forward. Uh, and I wish you the best for that, because it's a hard job, but I think you'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I I guess I'd just like to add, like, I think we all have different strengths and uh we have shown we work really well together uh this, this year. So thank you, because where I I lack, you know, you guys certainly pick up and I feel vice versa.
Yeah.
Appreciate.
Complementary strengths.
Um, also, thank you guys, I know you guys come like pretty much all the time.
Thank you, audience.
Thank you guys like for coming and stuff and hanging out, was being a part of this, uh, I know that like people ask me, for instance, passing, you know, in town or whatever, what's going on or. How things are going, so I hope you guys get stuff out of this and help spread, you know, because. Last thing I want is somebody to come and feel like they were left out or whatever, or they don't know like what's going on and things like that, so. Yeah, it's just, I hope that people are kind of getting the message and understand where we're at with the bond. Target, yes.
All right, so at eight P M, adjourned? It's bedtime.
This one is Ted, okay, she's the clerk, right?
You're the clerk.
No, I'm not.
No.
Chris, come on over here.
There's one that everyone has to sign.